Ready? Okay. Okay, it's 7:01. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First point on the agenda is questions or comments from the floor. Are there any?
No.
Thank you. Then we'll move into presentations. And the first presentation is the CSI project presentation. Take it away CSI project.
So just to give them a quick introduction, these are our computer science interns this year. Been working on their big projects. We have Connor Amrich, who will be graduating this year. We have A.J. Perosi. They've both been working in Unity and getting some intensive training from our Bosse's liaison, Dylan Tomrey, who's been working with us the past couple of months. And of course, we have our in-house musician Grayson, who will do a little serenading, but with what he's created on the 3D printer fiddle.
Great, built that on 3D printer.
Yeah.
This is completely made out of plastic filament, besides the strings and chin rest, or the shoulder rest, obviously. It's a little bit uncomfortable without it. But other than that, it's completely made out of 3D printer filament. And it took roughly a month, I'd say, to print.
How long did it take you to plan it?
A long time. So the first, like, three quarters of the year, I spent on a completely different project. And I'm gonna be completely honest, I was not that motivated. And I figured, you know, maybe I should switch things up to get a little bit more motivated. So I'm a musician, and I figured, you know, 3D printing a violin would be really cool. It's still a work in progress. It's not wooden, so there's a little, there's some flaws, like having pegs. They need to be wood so they can expand inside of the violin and hold their place. These kind of slide around a little bit, and they go flat. But for the most part, they're in tune. So like a scale. It's a little bit flat, but it's all right. And I just glued all the pieces together. The biggest piece is the body here. That took 32 hours to print, I'd say.
Wow.
Quite a while. I was afraid the 3D printer was gonna explode or something, but it's fine. Everything turned out fine. And the rest took, just took a day to print. And the rest just took like three to four hours about. And I had help from Mr. Millman, the orchestra teacher, to put it together, put the strings on. Yeah, if you guys have any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you think that one that's made like that could ever approach the quality of sound in a wooden fiddle?
I don't think so. I think that it's a lot of trouble to match this sound with a wooden violin or fiddle. Because the problem with this is, I could split it in half when I printed, but the body was printed in one piece, and there's supports inside of this. So it's not completely hollowed. So there's not, there's no like reverb inside of the violin. So it doesn't really make a full sound. But you could get the printer to, if you split it in half, you could take the supports out. Or you could get the printer to print this without supports. So that's, there's a higher likelihood for the printer to collapse. Maybe through the print, because there's no supports holding everything up. But if you do get lucky, you could get a full body printed without supports. But it might take a lot longer. And I feel that this is, I think that making a wooden violin, although it's very expensive still, would probably be easier and more accessible to, you know, create. It's like, say if you needed beginner violins, I think a wooden violin would still be way more accessible and easier to do.
I just wanna say it's very, we appreciate your perseverance in getting the project done.
Thank you.
As Ms. Jones said, A.J. and I have been working in Unity, which is a video game design sort of like platform. Last year, I was working in Game Maker, and I kind of, I made a game in there. And once that end-of-year game, I, Ms. Jones felt that we needed to step up and get into more advanced levels for video game design. So she went ahead and persevered and got us Unity. And we'd be more thankful, but I want to say that Unity is a lot of fun to work with. A.J., what do you think your favorite thing in Unity is so far?
I think just having everything be so orderly.
What is?
Could you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
Yeah, everything in Unity is very orderly, so it's very easy to work with. It's much more efficient than Game Maker.
I think, I think one of my favorite things in Unity is probably just the game space. It's a lot, yeah, like A.J. said, it's a lot more, it's a lot cleaner to use, a lot more organized. And there's a lot more that you can do with it. Like Game Maker is strictly like 2D sprites and stuff like that. With Unity, I can make 3D games and all that sort of stuff, and get into even higher level worth of like video game design. And I, in fact, actually got Unity for the summer for me to work on, so I can do some stuff with that. And I'm very excited. And I guess I'm more grateful that Ms. Jones helped us and got that for us.
And Mr. Tomrey.
And Mr. Tomrey, thank you so much for helping me with coding. I had no idea how to code at all before he showed up. Thankfully, he did.
The most important thing for me is that Warner Brothers Games that we visited last year said, "If you wanna work for us, when you come to an interview, you need to come with a game that you've created in a professional platform like Unity." So we got it, and I turned it loose on them. And when they graduate, they can now, if they want a job, could go to Warner Brothers with a game that they've created. I did not help them. I don't know. If you didn't get a chance there, they'll also be there at the Maker Fair if you wanna try out one of their games. A.J.'s, I think, is particularly aggravating where Connor's, the graphics are really cute.
Nice.
How many, how many people do you figure are playing the game now on your platform?
Well, obviously, I can't release it to the public, because I need certain stuff for that. And, but I've had people test it in school before. So I've had, like, probably over a dozen people test my game. They left feedback, gave me comments. And, but for like, for like, maybe like a week or two after, after me testing my game to students, I took their suggestions and I improved my game. In fact, like, my enemies before were just like this orange circle. Now they're a fried egg in summer.
Well, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
When you go to Warner Brothers.
Thank you, guys, for stopping in.
Okay, the next presentation is classroom departmentalization.
Hi, I'm Sophie Lee. I brought along, I have two parts to our presentation. The first part is our fifth grade team. They put together a presentation for you. And then I also have a second part. I went around and videotaped some students, asked them some questions about what, how they feel about departmentalization. And I put together like a short presentation. And I made sure the speaker works this time, so you can all hear it. But I wanna say thank you, because this year has been tremendous. We've had such an awesome year. And I'm really excited to see our data, whether it's discipline data or New York State assessment data. It's been just a really tremendous year, so. And they're a tremendous team. Also, tonight Carrie Powers will be presenting. And she has been one of our yearly appointments of, for AIS. But she is gonna be, we're recommending her for a position full-time at school this year, so. So anyways, enjoy.
And last year, we did the first grade, and this year we're doing the fifth. So we went from bottom to the top in terms of, you know what I mean? Not bottom, you know what I mean. Not literally.
Worst to the bottom.
All right. So, yeah. I'm Anne Marie, I'm social studies science for fifth grade. Ashley Eckert, math for fifth grade.
Claudia Morris, E.L.A.
Donna Lee Norman, special ed.
Carrie Powers, AIS.
Okay, so we're gonna just give you some information about how we use departmentalization and the way that we work together as a team.
Excuse me, Coach, just to move a little closer, just so you can hear better. Thank you.
Okay, so these are our five Cs of fifth grade. These are the traits we try to incorporate into our planning, our team time, our curriculum, everything that we are going to use. So we use collaboration. We work together to resolve every behavior issue at a struggling learner. Everything that we do, we collaborate with each other. And it ends up being more beneficial to have multiple people seeing this child. And you can come up with many different ways to help them, or find different ways to support them, figure out what works, what doesn't. We are all consistent. Everything that you see in our rooms is going to happen consistently throughout. What you see in my room is gonna be the same as Mrs. Morris's, same as Mrs. Craig's. All our expectations are uniform throughout. We have to use creativity, because we have limited time with our students. So we are making sure that we are able to plan fun and engaging activities. For example, you'll hear more about our interdisciplinary projects that incorporate all of the subjects. And we really just, we communicate with each other on everything. What we plan, our lessons, our AIS, projects that we do. We are making sure that we check in together. We check in between classes, and if there's an issue that hasn't risen, we take care of it and make sure that we're all on the same page. And we really just have compassion for ourselves and for the students. To make sure that we are there for each other. We're supporting everybody, the kids, we're just working together.
I think, as you know, we are departmentalized grades one through five. And we find a lot of positive aspects about that. We focus on one subject. If we're lucky, we get to teach the subject that we love. So I think that aids in creativity. We have a greater level of expertise and a deeper understanding. There's consistency for the instruction across the whole grade. And along with that, every subject gets the same amount of instructional time each day. Because it's a little easy when you're in your own room to kind of dip into math time if you didn't finish this book or this writing piece. So now there's a time allotted for every subject. And our rooms are themed. If you come into my room, obviously, there's all types of E.L.A. posters and things. Our furniture, Anne Marie has been the first one, and Donna Lee have gotten their new furniture. And you walk into Anne Marie's room, and it's a science room. There's the tables. She has all kinds of animals and compost and all kinds of science things. F and I are on tap for the next year's furniture. Data. We think data, looking at data is more meaningful when you're, when you're looking at the whole grade level as an E.L.A. teacher, or the math teacher, so on. It's easier to adjust your instruction based on the data you're seeing. And also, you are the person who will give suggestions to the other teachers as to what they do in the AIS time for that subject. Teacher relationships, teacher, 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 student. As Ashley mentioned, we're there for each other. We have support, whether it's our professional lives or our personal lives. We also know when we need to give each other space. Which is sometimes. We communicate constantly. I mean, when we say constantly, we truly mean that. Like right in between classes, you know, we're switching, we have maybe a minute and a half, and we're communicating.
We eat lunch.
Every day.
Plan. Texting at night. Really, we're not exaggerating. Because we need that. We need that to keep it consistent. We collaborate to make grade level decisions and to perform the responsibilities we have to. As far as the students, they're all of our kids. We are invested in all of them, and we take equal responsibility for their success. And the teachers, the students have many teachers to build relationships with. You know, sometimes there's a student or two that you just don't feel like you make a deep enough connection within your home room. But the child has the option of having other teachers that they could maybe connect with. And we think it's just an easier transition to middle school. They learn how to pass classes easier. They learn to work with different teachers. And teachers with different learning styles throughout the day, and they learn to, they have to adjust from one period to the other. Because even though we do a lot of things the same, we're still different people and have different styles. So we think that that helps the children adapt easier. Challenges, yes, there are challenges.
Really?
Like anything. But we learned, and we've grown from them. The intimacy teacher relationship. We can build relationships with so many more kids throughout the year that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do before. The consistency. We've built camaraderie that we have been able to get on the same page with our rules and how we handle given situations. And when we're not sure, we check in before we go forward. Because we want it to be as consistent as it possibly can be. And it's a give and take. We don't always agree. We don't have the same visions. We're different people. We have different levels of experience. We have different backgrounds. We're all different ages. So we come at things from a different place. But sometimes we, and we disagree. But sometimes you have to give in. Because at the end of it, it's about what's best for the kids. So you give in, and we just make it work.
So just to wrap up, we did share some pictures of like specific things that are in each of our rooms, depending on what subject we teach. So the top, you can see some, we have some math and E.L.A. boards that are specific there. And then I did a picture of the furniture, showing how it is amazing to have tables while doing labs. And the opportunity to do labs in a fifth grade classroom, I think, is awesome. She mentioned before, so Ms. Sarah had mentioned before, that we had done projects together. So even though we're all teaching our own subjects, we did take time to plan projects together, where we did come together, we worked in the hallway, the rooms all intermingled with each other. We planned three interdisciplinary projects this school year. We used information that we've actually learned at the Learning 2025 Summit. So it was kind of neat to learn something over the summer and bring it back and actually try it out in our classrooms. While we watched and observed the students working, we saw they were always engaged. It really taught them how to work well with each other. We had lots of disagreements the first project that we did. And they persevered right through it and worked through it. And I think really learned by the second project, oh, they're not gonna come in and solve our problems for us. We have to do it ourselves. And then it reinforced that even though we are departmentalized, all the subjects still come together. And in a moment, you're gonna see what the projects look like for us. So this summer, we did, or we are planning to meet again, change up some things we realized maybe didn't work, but also plan a fourth project as well.
And those projects are over a couple of weeks long.
Oh, yeah.
During the end of each quarter.
Yes.
So when you really look at it, there's eight or 10 weeks.
Yes.
That you guys are doing cross-curricular stuff.
Yes. And we designated, we designated Fridays usually were our days where we would still rotate for like about a 30-minute block. So we still kind of wrapped up. That was usually when assessments and things were given. And then for like an hour and a half of our Friday, we opened our doors, opened our rooms, and the kids just moved freely. And like I said, we did it over a couple of weeks, quite a few weeks. The first project that we did this year, Hatchet's, one of the novels that we start with in E.L.A. And Hatchet, the setting is in Canada. Well, for social studies, we do geography, specifically Western Hemisphere. So we were able to make a map. And then we even got math included in where they made a scale based on measurement. Project number two was, I did ancient civilizations, where they studied Mayan, Aztec, and Incan civilizations. They wrote a narrative to go along with those specific civilizations. They did a specific, like, rope-beaded activity with decimals. And then we even included special ed teachers. So they did a music ensemble and a mask-making room. And then project three, we haven't gotten to yet. So like a sneak peek, if you come to our moving up ceremony, you will see it. It'll be, they'll do a poster board, and they're actually gonna solve real-life problems, come up with a solution based on environmental issues that they see around us. And then, so this is just silly. We did, we presented this before as well to East Hill as a whole. And we thought it would be fun to ask students, if a teacher in another grade asked you if they should do a similar group project with their students, what would you honestly say? And so one student, "All for it. Yes, you can have the experience and get to work with partners and learn new things." Well, then some students were like, "No," didn't like it. But it was good to learn how to work with other people. And then I included again some of the images of the things the students had done for each of the projects.
Okay. So for AIS, just in general, it's the small group interventions that we use based on various data points. Benchmarking, classroom data, and then our own AIS progress monitoring are the main data points that we collect and talk about every month when we meet. Rotating between math and E.L.A., where we collect the data, look at it, analyze it, regroup students if we feel need to based on skills not met or skills needed for intervention. Then we pick those targeted skills to then do the interventions on before the next meeting. And then also, what we did and collaborated, I think, very well on this year, I know Alicia's excited, I think we all are, for the summer results, for the state tests, because the kids did so wonderful. But I think it really was a team effort. We used pre-release exams for math. We did it in the AIS in classroom. We started back in December, where it was just like one or two problems integrated into just instruction, so it was not a stressful environment. I tracked, and data tracked, the fourth grade who did the AIS block release test. And then Ashley had done the fifth grade re-release tests in instruction and did data analysis. So come February, when we were closer to really kind of dive into test prep, we had information and data, and we regrouped all of our groups to saying, if they need fraction help, they're going with you. If they need decimal intervention, they need you. If they just need basic math concepts over here, algebra, another group. So we really honed in and targeted the math skill set. Like I said, when we got closer. And then Claudia and I did it a little differently. She did it as a homework, just to take, you know, passage home, answer the questions. But then she was doing data analysis off of that, to which we then took, well, what theme, like theme became a really important one to re-go. Mean idea detail. So there were still just some couple of things, skill sets, that we still had to really hone in on in intervention, again, to get them prepared to take their grade level examination with confidence. Because I really do think, like, that was like one of the nicest things I've seen in a long time, is they weren't overly excited. But they weren't coming in with dread and stress and anxiety. They were prepared and ready to take the tests. And then recently, we just, our last kind of collaboration with The Lemonade War. It's a novel that I had met with Claudia on when we were talking about year-end chapter books, just to kind of do during the AIS blocks. As like an end-of-year application to the bigger pictures instead of small targeted skill sets. And we picked The Lemonade War, and it ended up being something that we're doing as a whole grade.
I guess they loved it.
Yep. And we had a reading journal. And then also, it turned into the math AIS block. We made a lemonade stand, which will have lemonade for our end-of-year celebration that they created. So it's kind of like holistically. But for the math block, it's 40 minutes every day. Depending on different schedules, it's not a day for every kid. But mainly, four out of five days. For me, what really popped that still needed intervention at the lowest level was backfluency, multi-digit multiplication, long division, rounding, and fractions was like a big chunk of our time, that we really liked standard spiraled down to like the third grade, fourth grade. And like I said, we went through and, based on Ashley's classroom data, and then like I said, what we were seeing is that in all AIS blocks, you divided and conquered that too, to really specifically target where kids were and group them based on they're gonna do it that way. And then same thing that I already talked about here, test prep for E.L.A., 60 minutes daily. And that was mainly a comprehension focus. Like I said, mean idea details, inference and theme were the biggest ones that I started the year with. And then we re-came in, like sequencing and causing effect for the other ones. Okay, so with all that, I'm gonna share some data. So that's what we do. And we did benchmarking from September to January. I did a comparison. So we really just have the math ready. Because I really think, and again, like this is like me being a data geek. But I'm excited, benchmarking's already started. I'm like watching every kid like a hawk, like, and whatnot. But 11 students, because I think our system does work really, really well. I've been actually excited and I'm kind of sad that next year I won't be with T5. But it's really been a cohesive, I think, full-on effort. Like she said, that they're all of our students. And it is all on a hands-on deck mode. So 11 students met their yearly growth in January, which I think is pretty significant. Because then in a half-year, they made a year's worth of growth. 23 students made significant progress in the 20 to 99%. And then 19 students made less than 20. So they still made growth, but to pull out of that, 15 of those students were on grade level or within a year. So they're not significantly behind, not making growth. They're where they're supposed to be, making little growth. And we jumped about double from September, was 23% to 38% of students are on grade level.
How many students are there?
We've lost, because we've lost and gotten some kids. So like 52 or 3, I feel like.
We have 57 now.
57, yeah. I packed, I range from like 8 to 10 in my groups. And then, yeah. So for E.L.A., we have the two benchmarks. So for I.R.D., though, same thing, 27 students met their yearly growth by January. Seven students made it within a significant progress range. And then again, that same number kind of of 19, where the majority of those kids are on grade level or like slightly behind within the year. So again, they're close to where they should be. They're just not making as much progress. But like I said, I'm very optimistic that that's gonna, those numbers are gonna change. But we had 45% of students on grade level or above in January, up from 35. But with that, for E.L.A., we have the counter, the Fontes and Pennell reading assessment that I administer to all 50-plus kids. And so it's a different take, because it's in-person, it's not computer-based, it's read a passage. I listen to half of them reading out loud. And then it's just a question, back-and-forth conversation with the students to kind of analyze how they do with their comprehension of like literal, summarize the text, infer and like make connections to the text, and then just basic like genre, title, comparisons. And 13 students are above grade level, 28 are at fifth grade level. Nine students are below, but again, within the year. And then the three students are below within two years. So that came out as 77% of our students in fifth grade are on grade level by mid-year. And what we were really excited about was some of those specific jumps. We had one student jump four levels, which is over a year's worth of growth from September to January. And it is one of the students that was red and has moved south, leads to the top end of yellow. And it's almost like I said, I'm excited to do theirs, to have them in the green optimistically next month. And then four students, again, jumped three levels. So in that testing framework, that's a year's growth again in a half a year. Then seven students. And then the majority of students made a quarter year. But the way F and P's work is that's still like progress that they should be making, because you can have three to four data points a year, so the levels fluctuate. And then six students, again, demonstrate no progress, but five of those six are on level and just stayed where they were.
So I joined the fifth grade team this year, and I have to say that everything they're telling you is true. Because I went to fifth grade knowing nothing about fifth grade curriculum, hadn't taught in the elementary level in over 20 years, and finished out the last year of the behavior classroom self-contained. So the first semester, we were self-contained. And we worked out behaviors. And we did a lot of that stuff, and it got in the way of a lot of things. But I was able to use their pacing calendar that they shared with me. I was able to go across the hall or next door and say, "What are you doing for this topic?" And they'd share ideas with me, sometimes share materials with me. That allowed me to address the biggest bang-for-your-buck standards with these kids and try to keep them moving forward as much as I could while dealing with behaviors. They participated with the fifth grade in projects. They go to fifth grade specials. They're in the fifth grade wing. They feel like fifth graders. And I know that was a concern in the past, because it wasn't always a classroom that had one or two classrooms on grade level. Sometimes it was variety, and you kind of had to shoot in the middle for specials and things. Kids are with their peers. So that was the first half of the year. And now in the second half of the year, we've gone to more of a co-teach. Every now and then, we still have to pull someone out and deal with things briefly, very briefly. And then we go right back at it. But these aren't my kids in this grade. These are our kids. And I never have had someone say in this, this level, "Oh, your kid did this," or "Your kid did that." We're all talking about all the kids. And my kids moved into their classrooms flawlessly. They were welcomed from day one, talking about where's the best place to seek them, how can we help you to help them. I've never been more welcomed by a grade level. And my kids. I've never been more welcomed by a grade level, and my kids, can I throw in this?
Like, it is weird when they don't come to us on the day, but it feels wrong, right? Because it's just with, we are a team, and it feels like one of us isn't there, or somebody's not, you know, missing.
So but by being able to try to keep up with their pacing calendar in the first half of the year, made so much easier for the kids to go into that co-teach module in the second half of the year, to prepare for that in sixth grade. And they're, they're doing well, and they really work.
They generally jumped right in, and they participate, they are actively like coming up and answering questions. They are part of that classroom.
And we also, as part of the sixth grade, having kids come and go, my classroom has been almost a revolving door of kids moving into the district and moving out. Now we have a couple that have come back around. But even with all of that change, it's been fantastic because of all the things that this team has in place.
And just to be back on that too, thinking that they all are our kids, and they all know that. Because there's no stigma to come to me, because I'm down the level. No, like, I don't think there's ever been any issue between the flux and the rotation of students that have the needs that require other adults, like, it's just all very much a community of students getting it done.
And open-minded communication.
Oh, yeah.
So the, the children also know, again, even though we're departmentalized, they can't go to Mrs. Zach or say something and expect to get an answer that they wouldn't get from me or from Mrs. Morris. Because again, we communicate like crazy to make sure that it flows through the system.
So there's no manipulation of mom and dad or mom and dad.
Not there.
It doesn't work, but.
I can give you an exact example, like yesterday, it was yesterday, one of the students came down and they were saying something, and one was like, you're not supposed to say that, Mrs. Craig's best. Like, why are you saying it in here? Like, I know different, and you're like, oh, okay. And like, so yeah, I think it is, and they know, because we have this missile together, we talk about it every day, actually. And they see us. I mean, we're all always talking at the end of every day, and I think they think we talk about other stuff, but we actually really are always talking about them. Of like, how do you, well, because like, I have like, this is what they did for me, how are they doing for you? Have you seen, and it's more of that social emotional support for them too, that I'm like, they kind of were having an issue with me, how's it been going with you, or the same thing. Hey, they had this rough morning with me, did they transition okay to you, like, and stuff. So it's been more to than academic, but just kind of like holistically making sure that they're all taken care of. If there is a need, that it goes and is addressed.
How, how are they grouped? Are they grouped in like homogeneous grouping, or do you have like by levels? Or are they mixed together?
They're mixed together. And our, our classrooms, our core classes are all at grade level. And then we have our AAS classes, that's when we have our smaller groups at their level.
I know you all have had the experience with the traditional fifth grade or elementary model versus what, you know, the decompartmentalization that you're doing now. How do you compare the two experiences in terms of staff teachers?
I, well, I, I taught self-contained, like, all subjects for one year, and then did departmentalization. Of course, as a teacher, I love teaching everything, but I feel like I'm much more effective being departmentalized. I have one focus on one subject. I also feel like it makes us a stronger team. And we were still able to, to deal with all the subjects because of our projects. So it was an easy workaround of like.
Right, and you're still getting AAS, like even though I teach math, I'm still getting AAS reading. And maybe we still need to cover science and social studies, like, we're still getting it all, just in different parts of the day.
So would you like, like it to continue, I gather?
Yes.
And another question, what do you think the difference is for the students in this model versus, you know, having one teacher in one classroom all day long? Anything that you notice in terms of students?
I think they, from what I've gathered, they enjoy, they enjoy being able to get up and leave and go to another atmosphere, see another teacher's face, you know, meet with friends a couple minutes in the hall. I think they really enjoy the variety, from what I'm gathering. I've never heard any student complain about that. I think they enjoy the variety, especially at our level.
That, that would be my next question, is, you know, at fifth grade, that's when you, when you're hoping that the transition is gonna be happening into middle school, we hope. And so how is that going from, do you see a difference from the fourth to the fifth grade? You know, with the fourth graders, they're, I assume they're doing departmentalization as well. You know, do you see that they're, can have that growth from having it that year into fifth grade? So it's not that big of a transition?
Well, I can do that, because I do fourth and fifth. And I'd say like the fourth grade group is just as, it's, like, the fourth grade team is wonderful. I mean, I've been so blessed this year with the teams I've worked with. Because it's, I would feel they would have a very similar presentation, that communication is always open daily, checking in. And the kids, like I said, they're moving, they're coming, like, people who need help that aren't, that are pulled out for that kind of help are not stigmatized. It's just, we're all rotating, and we all rotate again, and I think it's helped too with our targeted interventions and our meetings monthly, even when even those rotation groups change, can see like, oh, okay, that person's over. Like, it's just, it's a natural thing now without like, oh, I'm one of these. Because I've had that experience where kids refuse to have, have refused to come into my room. Because they know like, oh, Mrs. Powers is special ed, like.
And I don't even know if they know that at all.
No, I don't think they do.
Because we group, like, especially for math, we can group based on ability. They just knew, like, one group, one day, one group, one year.
And I think the same, yeah, you're Mrs. Bowerman, I'm Mrs. Powers. Like, we're all just who we are, and it's like, okay, this is where we're gonna go for this timeframe.
And I don't, I don't feel like any of the fifth grade students have looked at my fifth grade students in the self-contained room and thought that they were any different.
Yeah.
They're just in that room right now, and everybody else goes to different rooms. So it, it didn't feel like anyone was thinking anything other than, those are fifth grade kids.
And what grade level is the departmentalization starting? Grade one, and, and is, is that like difficult for them, you know, as first graders? Or do you find that they're, just, just in, in general, are, are they, are they able to handle it? As a, I mean.
Well, I, I think, I think they are. I can tell you that I haven't had one parent concern as it relates to departmentalization. I can tell you that there's, you know, a couple teachers that have expressed, yeah, if they could have a self-contained, like their own classroom, they would prefer that. But like, in the first grade team, I can tell you, two teachers really love it, and one teacher would love to have her own class, but understands that the positive aspects of the organization.
I'm more concerned about the students.
Yeah, and the students, they're, I mean, they're changing rooms with ease. I have videos of them on here, of kids I video that responded to me, asking them how they like it. I didn't have any of the primary kids tell me they didn't like changing classrooms, so.
So the kids are learning, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, are they, are they learning how to adapt? Are they, you know, so by the time they're in fifth grade, it's kind of like old hat.
Oh, yeah.
Which is.
Even from like, okay, so last year, we did it, and then to this year, the fifth graders that we have now went through it in fourth grade and came into it knowing how it worked and comfortable with how it worked, I think. I, I don't think, like, it, it was, it was just, oh, this is how it goes, right? Like, this is what we do, this is my homework team, but then we're gonna jump to the other room, so.
Do you think that it helps with like kids who are challenging or maybe more restless? Because they get to get up, move around, change environments?
And it's even like, I think you had mentioned, right, like personality-wise, like, even as adults, we don't get along with, we're not best friends with everybody we meet. And so when they get to move rooms, they get that opportunity also to have a relationship with like, that they might not see if they were some.
Do you, do you feel like you're more effective at dealing with challenging students? Because you're not with them all day, every day, so.
I've been telling everyone. I can tell you that, and I share this in with Mark, I can tell you that, like, the discipline data specifically this year in terms of overall data number of suspensions are way down. Like, way down in comparison. I think it's a, I think it's a combination of things. I think it's some hard work we did with conscious discipline, we're seeing the fruits of that. But I also think departmentalization plays a role in that too. So I think it's a, it's a combination of things, but I think departmentalization does help with that too.
Like I said, for me, I think the biggest thing, because I can speak to when we meet as my AAS department with the younger grades. But again, that stigma is not present in Canadajerry. It is just normal for kids to go somewhere else. They aren't coming in or refusing to come in, they aren't feeling bad that they're coming to the different rooms. But also like too, within that, I think like for, like seeing behaviors too, is it does give all of us a break, and it gives kids, because I always talk about too, we'll be like, I know it's a little bit more lively in my room, but it's that small, and but like, they're allowed different environments that are conducive to them and their learning. So like that it's not stigmatized, and they are meeting what they need. Because like I said, they act, unless it's based on our communication, open daily. I have some kids that are super quiet in the whole, in the classrooms and don't really participate, because I'm working with the lower end. But then like in, in my room, they're open and they're having more personality. So it does, like I said, that movement allows kids to be who they need to be and feel successful with different aspects. And like I said, the environments are becoming very apparent, like small group versus whole group. And then that lets us also too, when we go and talk about like special ed referrals, or just in the AAS world with groupings of how many kids, you know, like, because that is part of learning too, is the social emotional. So if a kid might be doing okay, but we notice, all right, they're not really being productive in a whole class, so they can come to me as well and be in a smaller environment to feel success. Because I feel like that's been our last kid with math, that we changed groups with. He was struggling in the whole group and not doing so well, and then all of a sudden, he came to me, and I was able to give him that more attention, and he's doing great, like, and it's translated back up to the classroom that he's doing better, and I'm like, but he shouldn't really be with me, he knows all the answers. But it's just that his, like, environment makes him more comfortable to be able to be his best self.
So, so do you guys have a common planning time, or like?
They do, but I buck them a lot.
We have a plan and like.
I just show up.
Okay, so, I guess what I meant, so the core teachers have a common planning time, and then the AAS, special ed, you work in there?
I have the same as they do, because my kids go with their kids for.
Okay.
Planning, planning lunch.
Planning and lunch.
But I don't feel that deters us, like, I'm always.
Yeah, you found time.
Yeah, I make it, and I always have, because I always feel bad for teaching, like, hey, it's worked. All right, guys, and I also my lunch is with their planning, so sometimes we'll just come up and have like a working lunch to make it work.
And observation, I'm familiar with the local district that's been doing it a little longer. And, and I went and taught this week for the whole day in the different groups, I volunteered to do that. And their model's very successful. The only bump, not the only bump, but the one that stands out to me that they're having, it's a bigger group of teachers, and they've kind of, not formed, but that's what happened in effect. Three of the teachers are more stylistically or whatever, and they're closer, and the other three are closer. So the kids were thriving, and it was great, but I think they could have gotten more out of it if they had more of a team unity that you seem to have. I don't know if it's because they were doing it longer, or they were more veteran teachers, you know what I'm saying? But it was still, they were doing very well, but I didn't sense that they have quite the feel that you have. They only, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think this year, I've been here now three years. I think this year, I've seen our teams just grow so much stronger. Like, I've seen the teams working so well, communicating with each other. And I think we've really built really strong teams. I can say that, and I think it's critical, especially with this type of model. You have to have strong teams that communicate with each other. And I can say that I see that happening in our, in the building. And I, and I think, again, that's why we're seeing improvements in our data, whether it's discipline or academic data.
I agree a hundred percent.
I, I have just a, a, a teacher question. Did your students take the ELA and the math online this year?
No.
They did not?
Next year, it starts a new like day, right?
Anyone else? Good, just have one other question, sorry. For those of you that have the new furniture in your classroom, what is, what have you seen in terms of the effect of that on the teaching environment?
In my room, incredible. Before, we were in desks, and I tried to group the desks as best I could. But of course, they're like all uneven as far as like height and stuff like that, and shaped a little different, that it doesn't make it easy to set it up. With the new tables that I have, I can set up an experiment, it can be set up all day. It sits there, the kids come in and out, and then I have flexible seating. So my chairs are all on wheels, and they can move from one table to the other. We have cushions around the room that now we can sit on. And even, we have furniture out in the hallway that when we do our group projects and they go out into the hallway, they can sit flexibly out there too, so I, I love it.
In the, it, it's like unheard of for special ed to have matching set of furniture, because we always get what's left over, because we're moving around all the time. And I was happily surprised that what I ordered came with me to the elementary school, and the kids love it. They, they take care of the room even better now. They know they have new stuff, they were excited when they came back from vacation to have new things, they love the chairs. And they wiggle the chairs, and they're not bothering anymore. You know, they can't swing around in circles like they sometimes want to, but it, it's a built-in flexibility for them. And I have some really tall sixth graders with me, and they can adjust their desks and chairs to fit themselves. Where I had one kid that just, even in a, an adult chair, he wasn't comfortable, because it just didn't fit. And, you know, we can unlock the wheels, we can shove them around all different configurations, it's, it's amazing. But the, the thing I think they love the most are the tables that you can write on. They're whiteboard tables, then you can flip them up to be a whiteboard as well. Ask them to do math on paper, that's not even fun. But get to go over and write on Mr. Fowler's table or Mrs. Rotolo's table and do math on the table. They're all over, because they get to use the markers, and then maybe they'll draw their picture. But it's motivating, because it's something different, and they love it. They just love it.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, you know, it's very, it's very exciting to hear what's going on, and thank you so much for your effort. And thank you for coming this evening to tell us.
I'll just play these short videos for you, just so you can get student perspective.
What's your name?
Aiden.
Aiden, and you're new to our school, right?
Yeah.
What grade are you in?
First.
First, and what do you like about having different teachers during the school day? Like, you change, you have Mrs. James, Mrs. Al, and Mrs. Stone.
Well, I have done it once in my school before, and like, I have done it once before in my school. Like, we were doing like a project and like learning about different countries, and I needed to go to like all the schools around me, all like the rooms around me, and we changed schools actually to the big kids' school to watch a movie, a movie theater. But I like it.
You like it?
Yeah.
You like changing teachers? Is there anything that you would, that you don't like about it?
No.
No? Would you rather have one teacher during the day or different teachers during the day?
Different.
Different?
Yeah, like, like, um, one, like, what if, because like, I love this in school, because like, we were just catching ducks right when I got here.
You love it?
Yeah.
Good, all right, awesome, thank you. Can you tell me what your name is?
Romi.
And what grade are you in?
First.
Okay, and can you tell me, what do you like about having different teachers during your school day?
I like seeing all the teachers.
You like seeing all the teachers? What, is there anything that you don't like about it? No? Would you rather go back to having one teacher during the day, or do you like having different teachers during the day?
Different.
Different teachers during the day? Is there anything that you would change? No? Okay, awesome, thank you.
And that's a quote from Mrs. Lindsay Hodge. She was very, when Romi went to first grade, she was very, yeah, shy and apprehensive about going, doing this model, but now she loves that, like, Romi loves it, and so does she.
She's seen a confident.
Okay, tell me what your names are.
Cameron.
Lydia.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Okay, can you tell me, what do you like about having different teachers during the day?
Happy.
You're happy? What, what do you like about it?
I like, I like how it's like really fun and we get to get teach.
Okay, and. Okay. Yeah, and what's one thing, what, is there anything that you would change about it?
No.
No? And would you rather have one teacher or more than one teacher?
More than one teacher.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Tell me your name.
Gabriel.
Okay, what grade are you in?
Third.
Okay, what do you like about changing classes? Like, having different teachers that teach you different subject areas?
I just like it, probably because I'll learn more so I can redefine goal of being a doctor.
Okay, is there anything that you would do differently with your school day?
Probably be a little bit more organized, because my headphones always get lost, and then they're in there. Um, probably be a little bit more organized because my headphones always get lost and then they're in there.
Okay. Do you prefer having different teachers during the day? Or would you rather have one teacher all day?
Different teachers.
Different teachers? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. What's your name?
Aiden.
What grade are you in?
I'm in third.
Third? Okay. What do you like about having different teachers during the school day?
I like learning about different subjects.
You do? Okay. Is there anything that you would do differently?
I'll have free time on Fridays.
Free time on Fridays? Okay. Do you prefer having one teacher throughout the day or do you like having the different teachers?
Different teachers throughout the day.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. What's your name?
Gemma.
What grade are you in?
Fourth.
Okay. What do you like about departmentalization, about having different teachers during the day?
Um, I think it's fun that we get to see different teachers. And because I love my teachers in my school so much, um, I love being able to show my different teachers.
Okay. And what would you do differently? Is there anything that you would do differently?
Um, I don't think so.
No? Would you rather have one teacher during the day or three?
All three.
All three? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Hi guys. Can you tell me what your names are? Okay. And you're in grade five, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Question. What do you like about departmentalization? Like having different teachers teach different subject areas?
Well, like. You go first.
Um, I like the fact that like you can finally be like done like with that class. And like you have time to like think about the other class without getting all nervous and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. And sometimes other, some teachers are better at teaching other sub, some subjects than other teachers.
Okay.
Um, I think it's like, uh, I think that we should just have one teacher teach all subjects.
Okay.
Since you don't have to go in the hallway, go into a classroom, go in the hallway, go to a classroom, go in the hallway, go to a classroom. Like that just takes longer and you just waste more time of like school time.
Okay.
You just take like one teacher and then teach them how to teach all subjects.
Okay. All right.
We gotta see our friends. Like if we didn't switch around, we wouldn't be able to see our friends in the hallway. And we would be limited to just recess and library.
That's true. Yeah. Okay. Um, so if you were given the chance or the, if you were given the option, would you rather have three teachers during the day? Or would you rather have one teacher? Eli?
Three.
Okay.
Three.
Yeah. One. Okay. All right. Thanks guys.
Yep.
Okay.
That was not in one of our classrooms. That was in the cafeteria today. I got that video today. I did get a bunch of different videos, but for the majority of them, they did say they liked having the different teachers during the day. I did have some students that wanted to stay, uh, stay in the same classroom. I do have to say, I was interviewing Ms. Marotti's kids and they wanted to stay with Ms. Marotti. Ms. Marotti is like, uh, in fourth grade, the kids wanted to stay in her classroom. She's a science and social studies teacher. But, um, overwhelmingly they, they liked departmentalization when I asked them the questions. So.
Those new families to the district, I wasn't familiar with a lot.
Some of them, yeah.
Some of them, yeah. Yeah. Some of them.
And a lot of them are new mid-year. So it gives you that real contrast.
Unusually large number?
No, unusually large.
Same kind of.
Yeah.
I just, I like the honesty and the fact that that one kid wasn't, um, pressured into being, had to say.
They would not be. That's good.
All right. Well, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. The next point, next presentation is from our energy manager.
No.
Oh, is there more? Oh, there's one more?
Nope. They're up first. They're, they're with the classroom and departmentalization presentation. Yeah, they're with the furniture. Yeah. Sorry, Fran, you're.
Fran, you're pumped.
You got booted.
You got booted. You're last. Especially you gotta be here anyway.
Yeah. You can't leave yet anyhow.
Sorry for false.
They'd be lucky out for a couple of hours. You're lucky. You're lucky. Chick-fil-A's open till like.
That's awful.
Wow. Is that the new furniture?
Some of us do go outside.
I want that. Now we all know your password.
Yeah, I know.
One, two, three.
The neighborhood came on too much.
License plate.
I don't know what that is.
So this is, this is my room before, before the remodel. Um, you'll just notice that, I mean, the, the, the desks are chunky. They were great in their day. When we had, we had the laptops in there and you can see they flip up. Um, and I liked that because, um, when I didn't want them messing around on a computer, they could close it and I had their undivided attention. I was, I've been here long where we had the monitors on the table and the, you know, the towers underneath. So it's been a while. There's been a series of these kinds of desks, but they, you know, they can't move. They're chunky. It, it's kind of, it's kind of dark as well. Oops. Did I go? Yeah, there you go. So here's the new, here's the new desk. I think the worst thing you can notice is brighter. I think it's brighter, it's airier. Um, the, the desks are, I have them set like kind of lecture hall. Um, and they, they do adjust. So let me take measure out because I'm a little bit about that. But so this is the low and then I have them going up. And then, um, they, um, they also, and this was actually before the flipping, put the panels on. There are panels on here now on the front. Um, and they do have these, I haven't done this yet, moving them around, but they have this little notch in the corner. So you can configure them in groups. They're on wheels. Um, the chairs are on wheels. Um, these haven't been put in yet, but, but, um, they have these, um, power ports. So when the company left, they forgot to, uh, drilled the holes in the front of the desk and the ports sit in and plug in. And then if the kids need power, they pull this out and lay it down and they can plug it in. But right now, um, I do have these little, I have towers if the kids need to plug them in. But, um, these just need to be installed. Um, one other thing, I just wanted to say, um, no, yeah, you can hit the X. So this is the other, my, I have a, I have a really large room and it was not using it to its full potential. So when I, when I called the company, they actually did this. I sent them pictures of my room. I didn't really know what I wanted. I, I don't do this for a living. So I sent all my, I sent them pictures of my room to the company. I had a Zoom meeting with about four or five of them and we talked about what I wanted and everything. And I had this idea that in the corner, it would be, you know, an area where the kids could go and collaborate, work together. So they came up with this wonderful idea. Um, and the, these things wheel around. And no longer do I have the, the, the laptops don't fit in the desks. So Kenny, um, then we got one of these from the basement and reconfigured it so all the laptops will go in there and recharge. So it leaves it, it leaves it free. Um, and just one of the things I want to say about, um, obviously, um, building a warm, inclusive classroom where students feel like they belong is important. But I often allow my students to work together. Um, I let the student become the teacher. Um, a lot of times I say things that maybe you're up here and they can, they can bring it down to, to student level. So, um, but I have, I have a, I have a saying. I always say, um, give them in a fish, you feed them for a day. Teach them in a fish, you feed them for a lifetime. Don't do it for them. Show them how to do it. I want to see your finger pointing at the computer. I don't want to see it like this. So, um, now I just say, I'm like, Andrea, teach them in a fish. So they know what I'm talking about now. Um, but, uh, and you can go ahead. And so here is, so here's the kids working, um, as my business law class. And then here they are over in accounting and they've got some sheets over here that they use, but they're helping each other. Um, and the other thing I wanted to say about my design, and I'm reading, kind of reading from when I, when I submitted my proposal. But I thought this is important. Um, the design of this room allows for flexibility for other classes. Um, for example, like a superintendent's day conference. Um, it has a lecture hall like design and breakout area. Desks can be easily maneuvered into groups for teacher and or student activities. And I believe like this design in this massive room, um, is even more versatile. And put together with Phil Horner and Phil Schoss' room across the hall, like we usually call, we call it across the street. See, we're like a hall, we're like a street. And I'll say, well, go to the.
Neighborhood.
Go across the street. We haven't come up with a name for our street yet, but, um, with Phil Horner and Phil Schoss' room just across the street. Imagine how the two rooms together could be used on a conference day or professional development. I mean, you could move the desks around. You can use this, move from kid, their room to my room, just right across the hall. And then, um, I think the, yeah. And then just my, um, transferable, flexible design, flexibility of the desks and chairs, the hybrid learning carts, um, cooldown space that they, that self-regulation, soft seating space, collaborative creativity. It's a great place to have lunch. Jim Carey came and enjoyed a student day. They thought he was in the diner. But, um, and just, just for F Y I, there's 22 seats with the tall tables and about a dozen seating over in the cushy. And, um, thanks to Mr. Patino and Mrs. Rose, um, I mean, my one class is of accounting kids is like 20. So I haven't had that in several years. So I'm very thankful to have that. Um, and I have two sections of accounting and I haven't had that in a long time. So it looks like I can have my college accounting next year. So I'll have enough kids to run it. So I'm hopeful for that. So again, the kids are really excited to see it, come in, they just like, mm, you know, this is cool. This is awesome. And they makes them want to be there. Makes them want to work. And then they'll, they'll always say, can we go work on the couch? Sure. You know, when they're working independently. Usually ask question.
What have you, what? What have you seen in terms of any difference in the students since this new configuration?
Well, I, they, they help each other a lot more. I mean, they, I, I'm sitting, I might be, oh, they're, they're working independently and I'm at my desk and I'm like, you know, let me know when you need me. But then I'll, I'll hear them. No, you gotta, no, you gotta debit that. No. All right. Well, you gotta, so I hear them talk. So wonderful. You know, over whether they're on the couches or they're just sitting next to each other.
The old, the old desk, didn't matter what I do. I, I either couldn't open them or I couldn't close them. And that, or you, you walk in line and all of a sudden it's ding, they pop up and now you got the computer up there. This just seems like the kids come in and they're working.
They get ready to work. Yeah. Yeah. And we did, there was a, there was hinge problems. So they, a lot of times they were like trying to close them and.
It's terrible.
So it's, they can get ready.
Slam it. And I'm like, I'm not gonna slam it. So, so it just seems to be much more.
And I said brighter area, easier to move around in. So.
Mine's, mine's not as flawless. Mine's like chaos. Okay. You know, if they need to find anything, they come to my room. So I took a video like before we were moving out.
No, I don't think I did a teacher desk.
So I'm like, you know, just stuff and whatever piecemeal, like Don Lee said, we just kind of piecemeal. All those desks, the, the back down tables, they always came from the old high school down. We salvaged them from the old library. You know? So this was kind of like when I first was able to get the new furniture into the room again. Still a little stuff. I kept some of those because those are like the rocky cushion chairs. But I've got, um, collaboration, high tables, low tables. Um, and then this area over here is like the high tables with the cushions, but then they've got the whiteboard. So it's not, it could be me over there teaching or I have, uh, sometimes I co- teach in my room. So we use that little area or it's the kids working in three and they've got the whiteboard to kind of, to work on. These, so here's a high table with collaboration going on. The pods, I wanted the pods. I think I'm the only one besides the cafeteria that's got the high, um, wall lights. The distraction. So it's like, it's like the old time carols, but it's, it's functional. It's, it's, it's real life that, you know, I had a student, when am I getting my flapjacks? You know, that he thinks it's like, um, yeah, like that, right. But I can have a conversation with a student. I have a, a dual pod and then I've got two singles. So they tend to go work in their singles and then they're not distracted by something else going on in the classroom. So I'm, I'm getting more out of students than I've ever gotten. Cause normally they like to be in everybody else's business. Now they're not. Or if I need to, if I need to, I have a rolly chair that goes between all three of them. So I can, you know, pull up and work with her or I can slide down. Or there's two, I, I have several students who sit together because they're in the same classes and they're talking about American history.
That's perfect for special ed.
It, it, it really is. It, it, you know, and I didn't know exactly how it would fit in the room and I just went with it this way. Because my desk is in the center of the room. So I can see kind of what they're doing and if they need help or whatever, but it's, it's, it's real life. It's not putting them with, you know, we had, we used to have the, uh, the trifold to put around them so they wouldn't be distracted. Or board, post a board between them. And this, the minute I saw those, I go, no, getting those. And, um, I have, I have students that come in from all, and then lunch. Tracy and I have lunch in here sometimes or we go down to the Mr. Warner, Mr. Schoss' room. Kind of, you know, it helps us take a break as well from the, um, classrooms. So yeah, the pods. So I, I push into a lot of classrooms. I see a lot of different things. I'm in the library. If you haven't been in the library, if you haven't been to the medical room, I didn't post those in here. But this is the math room before. This is, um, and, and like you said, the desks aren't even. So even when you're trying to make a table of three or a station or whatever, it doesn't, it doesn't flow very well. Now we've got the desks. They fit all size students. You know, we've got some, some tall kids, some short, you know, all different sizes. That's, these chairs are on wheels. They know, again, movement wise, they don't have to wheel all the way across the, um, the room, but they could if they needed to.
Those are the white erase.
And then those are the tables, the whiteboard. It's a learning curve with the whiteboard, um, tables. We're, um, running out of expo marker, dry erase markers left and right. Do you, you know, do you store them this way, this way, flat? But now we're going flat. You know, so, cause you know, Ms. Adams is buying them every week. Um, but they can do, um, you know, the math right on, on the whiteboard. Um, I, I have it at the end, but the communication, like I had a student that sat down and she wrote a little note on there. And she just needed, you know, three minutes. Leave me alone. Something happened in the hallway, three minutes. And that's all she said. I just need three minutes. So we all knew. We just walked away from her. We came back and we were able to sit down with her after the day, you know, and, and work through it. She didn't have to leave. She didn't, you know, but it was a short little communication. Um, the, the kids know, this is one of the, the math, the other math room. Kids know when they're like this, ooh, they're taking a test. But there are all different configurations that you can do with these things. You can put them in threes, fours. You can put a, a teacher in the middle or a student in the middle and they can spin and work. I mean, it's just, it's endless. Um, with, yeah, with these, the, the vertical whiteboards. So Carolyn's room, which was the room before that, she has a shorter one and it's yellow, bright yellow. All the kids were just kind of like, all right, well, they're not motivated. She's like, all right, here we go. She grabs that thing and out the door we go. And we're in the hallway now and she's like, all right, we're gonna solve this on here. So they're, they're mobile. They can go anywhere.
She was outside with one.
What was that?
I think she was outside with one.
Yeah, right. You just grab and go and here we go. And this, this classroom, um, the, they, they can work on both sides. They can choose to work at the desk with the whiteboards. Um, so yeah, this is Ms. Dora's room and she always does multiple different styles with it. Um, this was, um, in the English room, they have these reading, um, beanbag chairs. So I was like, you're gonna do an independent reading book close to the end of the school year? Are you kidding me? So I was like, you're gonna do an independent reading book close to the end of the school year, are you kidding me? Every kid read an independent reading book. Because they could get in a comfy spot. They also, you know, in the library, comfy spot, you know. It wasn't just sitting at the desk, normally, you know, flip the page like this. They shared, like if somebody wanted the beanbag, but then the next day they went to the couch. It just seems to be so much more, appears to be more learning. And like you said, English 12, they all read an independent, you know, book before the end of the year and they did a one pager. And I was like, oh my God, I couldn't believe it. And they all got up and were able to present it. So yeah, I'm seeing increased collaboration, the movement, whether it's physically moving or just they need to rock or move or sway or, you know, whatever it is. And it's, it's not noisy and it's not disrupting anybody else. Oh, with the white, with the whiteboards, like a brain break. All right, play tic-tac-toe for the person else you. Or hey, Wordle's up there, you know, history guys always do Wordle. So they get the, on the whiteboards, they have them as well, as white tables. You know, kids can try and write out the alphabet and then figure out which letter they want to choose. It's endless, you know, Venn diagrams, pros and cons, sentence starters. All right, who's gonna start, you know, just, it's just endless on what can happen. And I love it because I came, did I just say that? I go into multiple classrooms.
I recorded it.
So I know, I like, so I might see something happening in one classroom with, whether it's the technology, whether it's the type of lesson or learning or whatever it is, the furniture. Then I go to another room and I'm like, hmm, I wonder if that'll work in here? Or we have, you know, we're having trouble with this, what do you think about if we do this? And I'm like, oh, and I saw this in Ms. Bada's room or whatever. It just seems to be, you know, everybody's willing to try and do and, and make it so much better.
So do you think the kids are happier?
Yes, yeah.
They do like, they do like change. Like they let, they liked when they came in and they were like, this is cool, you know, so. And they do, they, they'll say, can we go, can we go work on the couches? And I'm like, no, today's not a couch day. You gotta stay at your seats. It's not an everyday thing, just when you're working independently.
And you think there's a good shelf life on the furniture? As veteran teachers, someday someone like coming to this place and is this something they could?
Seriously, we were shocked when we saw like the cafeteria, like, ooh, I don't know, how long before the students? No, I don't think we've had to replace anything and that's
And I, and I've seen some, you know, walking on furniture while you're in there, but it's holding up.
Yeah, I mean, really, I think they are taking pride in it as well. Yeah.
But it's, it's good, it's great. And it, it's just, again, I like the light and the brightness of it that it created in my room.
Yeah, and we're, and we're working on the testing situation because, you know, if we're, we're teaching kids this way and they're taking their assessments this way during the school day, how are we gonna do it for the state test? So I think we're working on that. It's got, you know, breakout, we're calling them breakout rooms, but it's, everybody's in a breakout room. It's not, it's just not the special ed students going into, you know, have a test read in here and, you know. So it's, it's where they're gonna be comfortable to do the best they can on the assessments that they're, they're given. So our, our neighborhood is almost done. I'm hoping Mr. Parker puts in for his, so he's in there. While I took Mr. Smith's room and whatnot. So question wise, I, I, you know, if you haven't seen all of the different ones, take a walk around, the library is endless as well, you know, different things.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Okay, now you're on, I promise.
Oh, hold on, Laura, you gotta go first.
Is it working? Cam? So I'm Frandi Ambrosio and I am the district energy manager. The district is involved in the development and implementation of an energy master plan. And this involves an energy management plan with a subpart of the electric bus fleet conversion, funding for decarbonization and alternative energy projects along with the electric bus fleet conversion and an energy curriculum for grades seven through 12 in the STEM program. The energy management plan, hang on, my first one here. So we're supposed, we're here to assess the current energy use, set and commit energy goals and a policy, create an energy team of 12 members, currently we only have 10, but we're still searching, identify strategies and technologies that fit our district, create an energy management action plan, which is basically a roadmap of how we're gonna get from where we are to where we need to be or shoot to be, execute that plan, and finally acknowledge the accomplishments through milestones. This relates to assessment of the current energy use and walkthrough audits. This is a visual, a sample of a visual representation of what the walkthrough audits at the buildings has revealed. This covers topics like missing or damaged ceiling tiles, envelope seal problems, like window seals and door seals, control devices for lights and HVAC, devices that control electronics. We have plug load controllers, which have been, people have changed rooms throughout the years and have moved their equipment throughout the years, so these devices have been abandoned. I'm currently redeploying those. Any mechanical devices like pumps and actuators, things that control heat, they all have controls put on them, so been reviewing to see what's been in good shape and what isn't. And finally, there's a redundant use of appliances in the building, so. But it's, that would be a district decision and not my decision. Next, we have the Energy Utilization Index, which basically compares the three buildings at the school to other buildings across the nation. The high school at, is in the green, which is good, it's the newest building, so it makes sense. The East Hill School, which is pretty far out of whack, the oldest building, the oldest systems, again, makes sense. The bus garage is in a weird area because the benchmark is for mechanical services buildings, but we also have attached a large storage facility. This is an uninsulated steel building, so it's, it's hard to be efficient. On the plus side, probably in the next slide or so, we'll see that the bus garage really isn't that important in the whole scope of the picture. This is our baseline for 2022 and this is what we'll, we'll be comparing progress against. So the electrical, which is the two tallest bars, is pretty even between the high school and East Hill building. The gas usage, the East Hill building is on the far right. As you can see, the gas usage is quite a bit higher than it is at the high school. Again, it points out that the focus should be at East Hill to try to make major changes. This is also where the concept of the geothermal heat pump system to add over there came into play last year or so. This is an actual comparison between the baseline and this first quarter of the energy use. You can see here, there's a slight difference. It's a little lower this year than it was last year. This is the actual data for that situation. So we're about $6,000 less in expenditures this year for the first quarter than we were last year. There mean, there's two main reasons for this. One is heating degree days, which is related to a milder winter this year than last year. And the second part is corrective actions, which have been taken by the facilities director and implemented myself when I was the building maintenance worker. So under his direction, we did a lot of repairs that actually made some difference. So the heating degree days is about 75% of this number, the $6,000 number. And the corrective actions is about 25% savings in that number.
And what was the total expense for the energy?
For last year?
Yeah.
I believe it was about $250, somewhere in that area, yeah.
$250,000?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah. I can get you that exact number, but I don't, I don't have
No, just, I just walked to the ballpark.
Yeah, it's, yeah, $250, it's somewhere, $250, $270, somewhere in that area. It's pretty high. All right, this is the roadmap for decarbonization and alternatives. So this is basically the plan on what the district needs to do to achieve major goals. And these are also realistic attainable goals. You could say, yeah, let's change everything at the high school, but, you know, you're gonna spend millions and you're gonna get back hundreds of thousands, so it's just not gonna happen. So initially, we'd like to study air source heat pumps for the transportation facility. What this would do would be decarbonize the transportation facility and convert fully to electric up there. Would eliminate any natural gas usage. Along with that, we could add solar, which would offset the increase in electrical demand from the, from the heat pumps. And in conjunction with that, we're gonna add the electric buses. So the electrical demand is gonna go up even more. So we need to offset that with solar. Part of that, step two, to get the funding and start to implement that, reinstate the heat pump system over at East Hill, the geothermal system, which again would decarbonize, it reduces the use of gas, converts the use to electricity. A little bit further down the road, we need to add more solar to offset that electricity. Let's see, number three, where are we in? It also adds cooling to the elementary school, the geothermal portion does. And it would also add cooling to the bus garage. And when we start to charge buses there, if we do actually get to converting a full fleet there, a byproduct of electricity is heat generation. So we may actually need to cool the bus garage to get everything to charge correctly and run correctly without an excessive amount of heat, without leaving the doors open all night. So we don't wanna do that, right? Next, we would study solar PV at the middle school and air source heat pumps at the middle school. This would, again, reduce gas loads at the middle school. And it would add cooling to the middle school, which the middle school has none right now, other than the office.
Nope.
Occasionally, occasionally, okay, well, once a year it adds cooling.
August. Winter. In January, right?
So if we could add air source heat pumps to the middle school, see the classes have a fairly low ceiling and the classrooms are a fairly small size. So air source heat pumps actually work well over there as compared to elementary school where geothermal is a, is a better fit because of the size of the classes and the ceiling heights. So next, again, some funding. What this does is it's going to, putting air source, first of all, putting geo at the elementary school reduces boiler loads on the steam boilers at East Hill. It converts it to electrical. Second, if we do air source at the middle school, that reduces boiler loads that are in the Nellis. So that reduces that load. With the offset from East Hill being a less demand, we actually could switch any remaining heat that was required through boilers from middle school over to East Hill and would potentially totally eliminate the two massive boilers at Nellis, which would be a substantial savings. After that, it basically boils down to improvements. So we could change the steam, the steam is a very old system. You know, it's a very inefficient way to, we're taking steam to heat hot water. You know, we're not running steam heat anymore. We just run, we take steam, we heat hot water, and then we run hot water through the building. So we've got a step in there that can be totally eliminated. So if we could put efficient hot water boilers in East Hill, then it would, it would save even more. And then, of course, like I said, we could remove the Nellis boilers completely and that would basically bring us to all the reasonably attainable decarbonization and alternatives that we could, we could expect on this roadmap. I know I'm rushing through this a bit, but, you know, answer any questions. If you have any now, I'll answer them.
Does wind have any value in anything anymore? I mean, we have valacious wind.
I know we do have valacious wind. I haven't done much research on it. In my past experiences, there's usually a lot of obstruction to it because, A, the size of the towers, they do generate noise when they generate power. So you really have to have, if it was off property, I'd say, yeah. If we could tap into someone that has a wind farm and maybe buy some of that energy, I would say yes. But on property, we just, I just don't think it's, not the best fit here. I conferred with National Grid to get a fleet assessment report as far as the bus fleet on what the infrastructure side, what National Grid can support and, and where we stand. We're actually in pretty good shape, except that the bus garage will not handle a full fleet conversion. There's just not enough power there to do it. But that doesn't mean that we can't start the fleet and meet the mandate, which begins in 2027. It just may require some progress, or by the time we progress, the grid may actually take care of that problem on their own side. So there's a lot of incentives for the grid to do this work and move ahead. So we would see, we'd have to see where that goes. But we could start and, and move ahead with an electric bus. Also, this report showed that the cost of charging a full fleet would actually cost us more in electricity than it, we currently pay in fuel for the, for the buses. So that supports the fact that we're going to have to have solar to offset this situation. There's, we're gonna have to do it. Otherwise, we're just gonna lose, you know, it's not sustainable. We're just gonna go further and further, further behind and it just, it won't get there. I currently have a fleet assessment directly related to the bus, which just calculates the routes and the charging required and the types of charger for each one of the buses because they all have separate routes. They're gonna require separate charging rates, separate times, they sit. It's called a dwell time for different lengths of time. So once I get all that information, I can send that back to National Grid and get a more accurate number. And it may show that the bus garage can actually support full charge. We may be ready at this point, but this was a preliminary report, so, you know, they took high numbers. It's a very broad, broad estimate. I have to mention with the bus thing that we have two different initiatives going on. We have the funding initiative and we have the state mandate. So they're really two different focuses. The funding is focused on pre-2009 buses and earlier. They have, part of that, getting the funding is to scrap early buses to, you know, to get them off the road so that when you get a new electric bus, you've actually made a difference. We don't have any, we lease the buses. We actually run, this year we'll be running 2024 buses, okay? So the funding's really not focused on our fleet and the proactiveness of the district to maintain current product. At 2024, we are about 90% more emissions efficient than the buses they're trying to get rid of. So we're really at the cutting edge, even though we're not electric. On top of that, the mandate is just a blanket. This is what you're gonna do regardless if you're proactive, regardless if you're running the most efficient vehicle on the road. It's just, you know, it's just a whole, it's a totally different thing. So maybe sometime, if we can start the fleet, get a few buses, meet the mandate, there'll be some common ground between the mandate and funding and, and it would fit us a little better. Next is project financing. So how do we fund all of these projects and all of these ideas? So we have Grant Source, which is pretty simple. We're just researching, writing grants and try to get some money to take care of things. There's Project Source, which is usually a power purchase agreement, which only pertains to solar because they have to have something to sell us, which would be power generation in order for a power purchase agreement to work. What that does is they, the, a company or a contractor would come in and put solar, they would absorb all the costs, they put it all in, and they would sell us electricity. So say we paid 12 cents now, they may sell it to us for nine cents for the next 20 years. There is a savings, there is a plus that we don't have the responsibility of the system. We don't have to work We don't have to worry about at the end of twenty years, what happens to the system. But the savings is not, you know, grand, you know, it's just a little bit, but it is budgetable. Uh, next, we have Contract Source, which is basically an EPC, which is an energy performance contract, which is the last lighting and controls project that was done at the district was an EPC. What that does is it takes the savings that are generated through doing the project to pay back the cost of the project. And once the project is paid for, all those profits or savings after that become ours wholly to keep. Then there's cost sharing, which is capital outlay and capital projects. Uh, our portion is about ten percent. Uh, and as it stands right now with the next project and future projects, that's pretty much in comfort. So I don't think we really can look at that to do many of the projects I'm looking at doing. And then finally, there's leveraging, which is just combining any number of these options to get the full amount needed to do a project. It could be some grants, some performance contracts, you know, some cost sharing, whatever. But, uh, and we try to get that somehow. This is the American-made Energy Champions Leading the Investment of Sustainable Schools Class Official Prize. So prior to my.
A I C L.
A S, yeah. I don't know where the last, oh, there it is, schools, yep. So prior to my appointment, I did some research for my interview and stumbled across this. Uh, this was due by the second week of my position appointment, so I rushed to get it done with the help of Dr. Chris Carroll, of course. And a guy just turned in and we actually received the award. So there's twenty-five of these across the nation, and we were able to receive that. The purpose of that was to extend the onsite energy manager services for another year. So the district can now receive the services of the, of the position that I'm filling for another year, which is good. It's, it's only gonna help get us further to where we go, and it's at basically no cost to the district. I'm sure there's some small incidental costs that I'm not aware of, but still, good, good. It's a win-win, I think. Next, we just recently reviewed a preliminary project for solar. Through Johnson Controls, which is the company that initially looked at doing the solar here, that got turned down because of infrastructure inadequacy. There wasn't enough transformer and substation capacity. Things have changed since then, so decided to ask them to take another look. They took another look, they think it's doable at a preliminary phase. They think this is actually something that's attainable. They presented it as an EPC, uh, which means that we have to pay it back, but it's basically no money upfront again for us. So they front the money, they charge us an interest fee, we pay it back with our savings. At the end of the project, we get a hundred percent of the savings. So this turns out to be an eighteen-year payback, a positive cash flow of one point seven million dollars over those eighteen years, a total project cost of two point eight million dollars over those eighteen years, an annual savings of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for the district, and a building A, A ratio of eighty-one point four percent. Now, that eighty-one point four is without referendum. If we went to public referendum, we could achieve, I believe, about ninety percent on A ratio. Uh, and we also would receive a half a million in A, in incentives from.
That's what's changed too. Incentives have gone up since the last time we looked at it.
Yes, the sentence has gone up and.
And just tapping into the grid is, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're able to do that from the last.
Okay, we're able, right. So the next, I just spoke with the representative yesterday. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a moratorium here right now. And, um, the reason for the moratorium really has a lot to do with the PPA-style program as where the power that being generated here locally is, may not even be produced here locally. Uh, we may have an advantage because of this moratorium. A, the fact that we would put the solar on the school property. B, that the school would one hundred percent receive the electricity and therefore the community would one hundred percent receive the benefits of this electricity. So this moratorium may have allowed us to stop them, the large projects, from moving forward and giving us a spot to put our foot in line, to get our meal ticket, so that we're next to get on the National Grid, uh, you know, improvements. So it, it could work out, um, Johnson Controls and Solar Liberty, who's the company that did our educational system outback, the two, the two-panel array outback. Uh, of course, I'll get it in writing, but they have conveyed to me that they were willing to take the initial, um, costs on their half of doing, approaching National Grid to get the initial survey done through them. It's a few thousand dollars for each of those businesses, but because of their investment so far, they're willing to continue to invest a little more. Like I said, of course, I would try to get that, get that in an email, right? Any questions on this, on, on, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, a number of things. So one is about seven years ago, we had a contract signed and sealed to have a solar system installed here on the solar city. Um, and we had the contract signed and it was all ready to go, and then the infrastructure question came up.
Right.
And I was gonna add three million dollars to the equation. And the system that was gonna save us money, all of a sudden, became a loser.
Correct.
And so we, that fell through. Um, so I would just say that based on that experience, which was extremely disappointing, that we should be very, very certain that the infrastructure part is included in whatever, you know, thing is being worked out with Johnson's, uh, you know, Johnson or whoever.
Yes.
That we're working with, because that came after, it was science field and delivered, and all of a sudden we got this, this, you know, shot out of left field.
We're not going at it from that direction. We're going at it, we're starting at the infrastructure. We're making sure that this works before we continue to go ahead and invest anything in it.
Yep.
So that's definitely the avenue we will, we will be taking.
And the other question I just had is what kind of tie, you know, based on the Inflation Reduction Act and all that, with a lot of, you know, sustainable money available, you know, for renewable energy? Um, is, are we tapping, are we able to tap into any of that to help offset some of the costs?
Uh, some of these incentives is actually from the Inflation Reduction Act, and it's a direct pay tax credit, it just gets paid directly to the district. So some of that is that, but of course, I will be pursuing grants to try to either offset this project or any of the other projects on an EPC. If we can throw in, you know, even twenty-five percent, that may change our annual from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty, or maybe even two hundred thousand dollars, depending on the award, right? Just increase our end of the savings and the less we have to pay out for the project. So I am always pursuing funds to try to get any of these projects done at least cost to the district as possible.
Um, just one last question. Any concept of timeframe of when we might start to see some of the solar or geothermal or?
Well, the track two for Nicerta's geothermal is to be determined, I've been told, but is expected to open up at the beginning of next year. So we're looking in January. At that point, we would need to have our submittal adjusted, edited, and ready to go back in. Uh, and that was through SEI, who was our architect. Uh, they're the ones that submitted it last time. I did speak with the Nicerta representative and discuss the list of strengths and weaknesses, and we'll be addressing, personally editing and addressing the weak areas so that we have a better chance. We were in the top fifty percent on the last round that we did not make it through. So, you know, I, I think we got a very good shot next time, but, you know, you just never know. Sometimes parameters change or guidelines change. Just like the school bus program, the first clean school bus round basically was a lottery. This time, it is a grant with a minimum request of fifteen buses. So although it sounds grandiose, we can, we can't even charge. That's a complete fleet change for us, we can't even do it. So we have to pass this situation by. Now, maybe, maybe between the first, uh, the first one being a lottery and the second one being a fifteen bus minimum, maybe the third round will be somewhere in the middle where we can get five buses and, you know, and it's a lottery, I don't know, you know? So we'll see, but, uh, you know, the time's gotta progress. Unfortunately, that opportunity is, is not for us at this, at this point, so.
And how about the timeframe for solar? You know, again, I, I know you can't give a definite time.
I can, I really don't have a timeframe, but I would guess and say that if we strike now and if Johnson Controls and Solar Liberty is willing to put in a little money, like they said they would, uh, for these, to see if the grid is capable, I would say within a year, we probably could have bids out and.
Is the board okay with us moving forward and looking at the solar?
Well, you know my answer.
I know. It's, it's actually positive cash flow by eighty thousand a year, like cash.
And that's what the original one was, was supposed to generate.
That's with nothing out of our box.
So, uh, I can explain the fields just a little bit. These numbers are generated on the best ROI that they can do, right? They're gonna do that. They're not gonna give us the worst and, and, you know, try to make it look, but they wanna sell us this. So, so what that means is that they're looking for the least amount of development in the property, which puts us at the field in front of the bus garage. It is build-ready today. It gives us a short interconnection, or about sixty feet from the interconnection of a system on that field to National Grid's infrastructure. It's very good. So, uh, and it's also of the fields they propose, it is the largest, uh, there's two that are exact same size, but that's the largest field. The other proposals are for the hill, which is where the original proposal was, behind the baseball field. Uh, and I had also had them look at the triangle between Carlisle and Cunningham behind the baseball field, uh, which is, to us is unused, unused land. But the hill requires site modification. The hill's interconnection is from that hill all the way to behind the maintenance area at the high school. So you've added considerable cost in trenching and running cable service from the hill to here. Uh, and the Cunningham Triangle field was about sixty-eight percent of our current load, as where the other two fields are eighty-four percent. So the Cunningham one is smaller. I do think that the Cunningham, uh, area could be increased in size. Uh, I'm not sure why they made it only sixty-eight percent. It looks like there's enough land there to make it larger. Uh, and the, the interconnection is on Cunningham Road. Again, it's only about sixty feet, uh, but the site is very wet and it does have its benefit. So there's some growth, you know, so there's some site preparation that would have to be done there. But it may turn out that a sixty-eight percent field, uh, may cost-wise, right? Because a smaller field, smaller price, smaller payback, uh, it, it may actually work, but, uh, you know, I see it right now as being in front of the bus garage on the, on the grass area, so.
Are we okay?
Anything else?
You guys agree with going, moving forward?
Yep.
I mean, after you'd have, we'd have to finalize anything.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, you know, like I said, I would get in writing from these companies that it's no cost, everything I'm trying to do so far is costless, nothing, right? I've gotten bids, proposals, estimates, you know, advice, all these things. I've been working diligently at costing us zero, so.
And Johnson Controls is extremely excited about this project. So they've got some things in the works that they know this could work. I mean, they're kinda jumping through their skin to, to get this moving, so.
Good. Okay, anyone, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, good luck, and keep us posted.
I have one final area, unless you guys wanna go home.
No, no, go ahead.
Remember Chick-fil-A, so. That's on my way home. All right, finally, we have the energy curriculum. So this involves concepts for the middle school STEM classes and careers for the high schools' STEM classes. At the middle school, we have discussed what energy is, uh, what we, where, how would we make it and what do we use it for. And we've also discussed, uh, the difference between renewable and non-renewable sources of energy. So we're exposing the students to what's going on with energy. Uh, it's, it's been pretty good. I'm actually ahead of schedule. I did my second class Wednesday, it was supposed to be my first class, so we're actually ahead of schedule there. And then for the high school, the solar educational system that we have outback, no one has had the programming, uh, so no one really knew how to study it or look up what it's producing or teach the students about it. So I've taken the initiative to do that. I've taken the students out, exposed them to that situation. We learned about it, uh, what it can do, and the different careers involved. So it's everything from computers and microprocessors to masons and welders. So, uh, you know, uh, we went through that and then that went pretty well. So the next, uh, class for the, for the high school is to actually have them design a system using the information that our system produces, uh, you know, how many megawatts a year is produced, physically, how big is it? Design a system for their own home or any property that, that they can find and look at either a generic National Grid bill or their own National Grid bill to calculate what the return on investment with the payback period would be for their own system, so. And that's it, thank you. Sorry for rushing.
Well, I could tell you, I have solar and geothermal in our house.
Okay.
And I have zero electric bill and zero fuel bill. So it's a very good situation to be in right now.
Well, I, we can't do that here, we can't get to zero, you know, if we're gonna have to, uh, you know, the school runs twenty-four seven, right? We've got cleaners at night and everything else, so we're gonna be on the grid at least at night. Uh, the only avenue around that is storage, you know, battery storage. But, uh, I just don't think that's, that's a key.
No, I'm just.
To get into yet, so. All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, I hope it was educational.
Thank you. Thanks, Tree. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, there's no other questions? Thank you very much, and good luck going forward, for sure. We're a hundred percent behind you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, next thing is approvals, and we have to approve the budget vote.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? All, thank you. Um, when we get on to personnel, I would entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, and I just have to wait a minute for my computer to get back fired up here again. Then we can proceed. Okay, so, uh, first one is accept the resignation of Amanda Rose from the position of school counselor, effective June thirty. Any questions on that? Uh, she's, she had a letter with that that explained that, you know, she's asked to move on and was very, you know, grateful for her experience here and also sorry that she needed to leave, so. Okay, next one, C, is, um, the resignation of Highly Hurt from the special ed teacher. Any questions on that? Okay, then we have appoint a leave replacement teacher in the middle school, which would be Morgan O'Connor. Anything there? Okay. Uh, school counselor. This would be, I need my glasses.
This is the, uh, for Amanda's position at the high school. Uh, had a great interview. Great about this position is Janet's actually worked with her in the past, so they check on both of them. And she's also gone to another school district now, is in charge of scheduling six through twelve. So she has school tool experience, AP experience, and the, uh, so, um, if we, again, I know it keeps saying we get lucky, maybe it's not lucky. We, we're drawing some great people here and, uh, we're, we're in great shape because we also, we know this person, we know how they work, and I got some good reference checks as well down, down where she is currently.
Well, that's great.
Extremely excited to be here, like, extremely excited to be here, so.
Any questions? Okay, moving right along, appoint a math teacher, which would be Danielle Blumberg.
Is this taking the place of something or is this what we're adding?
Taking a place. Mr.?
So we're moving, so currently in sixth grade.
So we're moving, so currently in sixth grade math, we've had, we've had a K5 cert or K6 certified teacher. Danielle's actually finishing her 5-6 math extensions. We're actually moving a math content specialist to sixth grade as opposed to a classroom generalist. So she, she's been great. She's been our AIS person for the year, so we're just moving her to a full-time Danielle position.
Okay, thank you. Elementary teacher, Carrie Powers. Who would that be, I wonder? Okay, any questions there? Welcome. We didn't vote yet, but I think we will. Okay, appointed ENL teacher, that would be Eddie Watt.
This is just a reappoint because it's a year-by-year position.
So that's a year, a year-by-year?
Yeah, because you don't know the, you know, the number of students that you might have. Yeah.
Okay, but this is for a full-time?
Correct.
This coming year?
Yep, and part of that was the budget. We had it in the ARBA grants and now we're gonna get full-time.
Is that a 10-year position then?
It, yes, it will be. Yeah, as long as it's here for that many time, that many years, yeah. We'll convert it over once it's that.
Okay, Danielle, saw that? Okay, and then we have pre-K teacher temporary position. What is the story there?
That's the, that's the three-year-old program. So had, Fullmont was running it in the building and now.
And now we're taking.
They're, they're not, they're moving that classroom, but we have enough students now. We have 14, 15 that registered, so.
Golden River was 14, 15, and they think there's another one coming, so we should have. We think we'll have 16. So between that, if we get 16 or more, along with the grant that we got, we've pretty much come close to wiping out that debt that we had with pre-K. Remember we were paying 120,000 on our fund balance? Our, our, our regular general fund?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, great.
And have our own program.
And then we have a create a temporary.
It's for the same class. We have the same position.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I would entertain a motion to vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All, thank you. I do have a thing I just wanna add, just an announcement and new business. I just received a notice from NISBA that they're gonna be having a, a leadership conference in the end of July, a two-day conference in Albany. And all. Thank you. But I just, it's $100 per person who attends. It looks like a great and meaningful agenda. And so I'll bring you more information about that in the June meeting because I, I think it'll be something that would be useful to attend. I would plan to attend it, but I think it would be great if anyone else would like to go as well. It's, I think, July 27th to 28th. And so we can talk about that a little bit. I'll put it on the agenda for the June meeting and we can, I'll have more details about it. Okay, do we need to do executive session?
Yes, just real quick.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into executive. All in favor?
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to accept the motion to go on.
Let's go.
Okay.